Apologies with reasons, his wife said it was on the glass and I'm glad to make it. And catch players advise he will be late. Can I, you have to take cats from the tubs and reasons for us.
No, thank you. Okay, decorations of interest and dedication. You can mention those as a date to date to during meeting if they become apparent at the time. There's no decorations of interest. I'll quickly move on to item number four. In the midst of the meeting on the night of October. There's five pages, starting at page number one, page number two. The opening of had thanks from the Royal British Legion to myself and the councillors, which wish to pass on. And thank you very much and. Adam, Kevin, over to you.
Yeah, I have to change just to make a quick statement if I can as clerk, just to advise them because I mean, many of you aware of the social media comments at the weekend was really determined to a bit of a totally unacceptable in my opinion. It's just really for those of you that do get involved in it, I appreciate that you're any restraint you show, a number of cats which did make comment, but none of it was going to war. But again, just to remind you that we are at the mercy of our public out there and the monitoring officer sits over there in the office that could easily be retorted to. And as I am due to bear into it, so if I so need to. I'm also conscious because we're now moving towards a by-election and there are broad links, as you know, certainly one of the members of the council standing and such. So I just wanted to please really say to you, please be careful on the social media jet. I do not want to have to call many members here as part of my role and do anything more. You know, I would hate to have to go to the monitoring officer in any sense. So just really grateful if you could observe the kind of conduct that we either know in principles or in our own sort of internal rules. Thank you, Chair.
Councillor Allen. Thank you, Chairman. I would just like to make sure if it were possible that all the members of the town council have seen these statements issued by the family of Mark Sirfield. And if there isn't, or if anybody has not seen it, come and talk to me afterwards. I can certainly point in the direction of doing it. It's a very important statement that was made, I think, and it does explain, I think, what happened on Sunday.
Thank you, Chair. For everybody's reference, it is actually printed in full on the front of today's.
It is, yes.
So that's an easy sort of screen, I think.
Thank you. I would just actually go back to five point one, which is ill-advised patient. That was saying about car boots, as in terms of, you know, where you hope they will be held to fitness. And also, I mean, the issue which has always seemed to block my thinking and others is we tend to have a requirement about people having public liability insurance. It would be full, first of all, it would be full of mayors charities. It would be checked that we are covered by our own insurance. Kevin has checked with the regulations for have a car boot sale. And it will be carried out very strictly under those conditions. And.
It is on our own side, Chair.
Yes, it is on our own side, on recreation. On the recreation ground where it's most of the previous building car boots. And there's a lot of, been a lot of public demand for them.
Yes.
And hopefully, if these run smoothly, that will have future opportunities.
Right, I will move on if I may to number six, planning matters.
Yes, I can share a short report there. We've got four, four items there, having looked through all of them, nobody's approached me last to take it out of the, and no comment to read in the wide debate. Four items there that are proposing, no comment, Chair.
Okay, can we, no comment. No comment on the blog post in secondary.
Okay, I'll catch the Fernandez and catch the Bruce if you're okay with that, if you are.
I will put it to the votes. Can I see all those in favor?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16. Hands up, committee.
Thank you very much. On to item number seven. Neil from the Paul Coyne, if you can comment.
Thank you, Chair. I will be bringing the report to the committee.
Thank you very much. I'll go on to item number eight, five numbers.
A report, Chair, spoken, well, hopefully the report's on the platter. I spoke with two people, Marcus Stephen, and there's your answer specifically in relation to future development. So I basically reiterated again in my last report I left for you to represent anything else. You want me to do, you told me not to speak to the agents until I've got the fact here. It says there that Chief Plan has confirmed, whilst there's something in the southern area extension, there's nothing in the state of the west and the existing drove cycles are ever unlikely, ever to be made available or identified for development. Nick Falfour gave you those words, that's what I mean, which is what you're asking for.
Councillor Orban, Paul Coyne.
I'm a local councillor for the apartments, it's both of them. I vote this number fifteen, the rent, which will be increased from the current level of one six one oh per annum to a level of three thousand five hundred per annum, which makes another one thousand eight hundred ninety pounds per year. Now, when we have periodic budget printouts, reserves have had to be moved, et cetera, how are we actually going to pay this extra one thousand eight hundred ninety pounds per year for the rent? Is that going to come from the allotment holders or which around one hundred and four per annum?
I did clarify this at the last meeting, Madam, if I can, if we can collect that. We've already billed everybody for this year for October. I mentioned we have not got the ability to decrease to October.
That's why I'm also.
So it will add fifteen pounds to each of the drove lots if that's what council agree when I renew a report in probably ten or eleven months' time or before that consultation. But no, we have to accept if we, as mentioned at the last meeting, the three and a half thousand is in line with inflation at that time and what the index, the pricing is. Well, for this year, it will come out. I will find a budget that can come out.
Right.
And it will come out, I will not spend on the allotment maintenance.
Yeah, I did, I did recommend that part, but I'm just saying, from now on, when the right are reviewed again, you're going to have this level of expenditure. We haven't put off the preset. I'll come on to the reserves wage rather than the government document. Thank you.
I've got some of the councillors first. First of all, Paul Coyne.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chair. What I was going to say on this was that the indication we're getting from NKDC is that this site is never likely to be developed, but I believe we have an option within the labour plan to market as an area which would not be used for development. So it's possible the labour plan could afford us an extra degree of protection so that they remain as the owners.
Very much. I believe it's, Councillor Charles, work for the.
Yeah, very close to what's just been said. I mean, I don't find this all that strong in the sense that we have a duty to provide allotments on an area that's going to expand by many thousands of houses. And this type of wording at this stage, unless things are added to it, is not strong enough. That is the point I'm making. I mean, the lease will have in place the right for the landlord to take back the land, but if the land is allocated with the subject of a planning consent for development, maybe residential or commercial, on giving twenty-four months' notice. That is weak in the sense that we have a duty and we've got a duty far beyond just those down the drove. So I would like something stronger that councillor agrees with. Okay, thank you.
Scott's, sorry, councillor agrees, all people go to the.
I'd like to call to information first, have you taken any legal advice on this?
No, you didn't instruct me to, the councillor agrees, you asked me to go to hospital, I put this to you at that meeting on the nineteenth and you asked me to go away to NKDC and ask that question and talk on the floor.
Can I suggest that we should take some legal advice and that may be expensive legal advice, either through one of the associations we belong to or even through Lincolnshire shared legal services. My concern is if we accept this, is we are accepting the terms on it. I understand where we may or may not be, that we have a tenancy in mind in the moment, but it is accepting that we will vacate that land within two, two years' notice, which wouldn't ordinarily be the case if it was a substantive lease. And I think before we sign up to it, although we may be creating that we might be getting stronger rights and a stronger legal position, we actually may be weakening our position because that area of land has been allotments for a long time.
Councillor Allen. I've got the same sorts of concerns that have been expressed generally there, saying we need to do our sort of councillor's position in whatever way we can. Whilst the words are comforting to a degree, they have got all sorts of legal get outfits and pieces that we've got. If we could incorporate it into the labour and some additional degree of protection that we find, but perhaps there is a need to do our councillor's, as exactly said, in terms of seeing whether there's any mechanism that we can use on the back of our grandfather rights to beef up the lease, you know, to protect our position in the legal document itself. But I would propose then that we accept the recommendation with that extra bullet points in it, if that's all right. Well, I don't suppose we can accept, well, not suggest amendments to that end of the lease, subject to legal agreements, legal advice being taken, if that were your point.
Maybe my, Mr. Chair, I know we say there isn't a lease, but there certainly was a lease in previous year. If we accept the position that's expired, you are in a period of holding over at the moment, so the previous terms do apply because the landlord is still accepting rent. So we do need to see or try and find the previous lease, if it can be found or wherever it may be, and see that the terms of the lease that we have at the moment, we are not accepting, are lesser positions than we had before.
So I've got a resolution that we know to report, take legal advice on the terms of the, of the proposed lease in relation to the current lease that we've got, so we are not accepting lesser terms. Further report to county.
Is that seconded, yeah, by councillor Fernandez, have you got that? Councillor Jackson, do you wish to?
I'd just like to comment. I think what councillor Graves said about who we use for that legal advice is quite important. In our discussions with Tesco, it came out that how much North Kirstyven will pay for the legal advice through the Lincolnshire Services and that it's a fraction of what we're paying to road funds. Now, I realise it's different issues, but I think we should investigate if we haven't already done so, using the Lincolnshire Shared Legal Services for items such as this. I understand there's sensitivity possibly in other items that we are taking legal advice on at the moment in as much as, but even then, I would assure you that confidentiality, just even if, for example, we were in dispute with North Kirstyven, then there would be no conflict of interest as far as the county legal services are concerned because they would use a different branch.
Councillor Dolby.
And I suggest that it's very likely that Chattertons have the lease in their archives. I certainly seem to have lots of receipts and lots of information on town council, that's for council.
Thank you very much for that. Might I just ask one to just be clear? I feel I'm seeking legal advice, so you're looking for, is it security of tenure? Are you talking about not dispossessing yourself in relation to a previous lease to this lease? But is there something with, is it the two-year clause that causes some consternation that if there was the potential for development, we'd suddenly lose a hundred and fourteen plots of allotment, I would be after. I just want to be clear when I instruct the solicitors, both in terms of this draft headwork, we're actually trying to achieve secure, just for my clarity, if you may, please. I don't want to misinterpret them, the solicitors.
Councillor Bruce.
Jim, I'm fairly convussed with both commercial and residential leases, but I don't understand this, this is a piece of land. Is there a right to renew? And is it covered under the Landlord and Tenant Act in that we have a right of tenancy there? Should we go to court, for example, if we want to renew, et cetera, et cetera? I am not familiar when it comes to land, what rules do or do not apply. And I think it is councillors to make the decision, then it should be based on the legal advice. If that legal advice comes back and says, you actually haven't got a legal position and this is the best you are going to get, then councillors inform and that's what we're making the decision on.
Okay.
But by signing this, we can actually, to sign this on our behalf, and actually we've weakened that position.
I understand. Thank you very much, Bruce.
Okay, for clear, what proposal is?
Yeah, it is.
Okay, prepare to see all those in favor.
It is to note the report and you're asking me to seek legal advice and come back to you with a report on, as regards the, in comparison with the previously, sorry, I'm using the formal words, I'll get it right. You want me to look at the previous lease compared with this and then seek legal advice about our position and report back to you in summary? Okay, I understand, that's the problem. Can I just ask, just for you, you instructed me last time not to speak to the agent. I feel this time I will have to tell them that the matter is still being considered by councillors, so I assume that causes you no angst because they are pushing, as you might know, so.
You'll find out, you've got a video.
Yes, very well. You need to do the vote first.
Yes, okay, if you're all clear, can I see all those in favor? Because I will report at just since I can, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16. Hands up, Chair.
Thank you very much. Two moments. Fast, I can't, because I mean, this is before it came to a month ago, it's probably a long, I possibly could have done that first time round if the thought process had been in place at the time I bought this due first time, we sort of like set it on again. So that's really encourage us to, you know, look through things and come out with all the instructions, if possible. Say again? You asked also for maps, so I've included, just shows the limits of the council. And you will see there the Gally Hill, which I'm currently investigating in relation to ownership issues, the Drove Hill, and you'll see there maps about Drove Lane. Is that all the lane? You can see we're slightly devoid, that's something I need to improve in the councillor's report. I am, just so you know, along as I will be writing to all the Gally Hill allotment holders about land swaps and that, sorry, lack of games and such, I will be looking for something more definitive for the Drove Lane area, for the person that maps in the councillor's possession, Chair.
Councillor, thank you very much, Chair. I was interested in that, I'm asking for those definitive maps and I'm very comforted to see that according to the Land Registry, we do own the allotment area that I was expecting to see there. Were we to actually superimpose on that the actual boundary of the allotments that we've actually got at the moment at Gally Hill, we'd find quite a different shape here. So I'm secondly comforted again that you are starting to look at issues associated with the situation that we now have out there in relation to allotments that seem to be darkness.
I will, while councillor's already made a resolution that I look at it with councillor Lauren as well, councillor, so I'm going to write to all the Gally Hill allotment holders to tell them I'm looking at it, see what it is, response is that or this is, and then I will undertake that piece of work around seeing who's done what.
Thank you. I won't be promoting myself.
Sorry?
I won't be promoting myself.
No, no, no. There's only a resolution, councillor Lauren, but you've worked, worked for me on it, it's just. Thank you, councillor.
If there's no further comments on this, I will, as it's for no to know, thank you, Chair. If I may, nine point two, again, you're aware, I think you're a sort of explanatory draft business plan, which is by mention of okay, they consider on the tenth, they are technically supporting it in. At the time, I've now had it confirmed that the resolutions are listed on the page two of the NKDC report that I've put in, that the executive board endorsed the proposal, the executive board agreed to have a working group and the executive board to offer us a little one-year license for the market, we're ratified MK on that Thursday morning. And now going on to suggest at the time, now that we, I've been asked for three councillors to form part of the working group, taking the liberty of putting three names out, because I'm conscious of NKDC's usual meeting requirements and times and daytimes. I'm asking there, Chair, no report, except the one-year extension, agree, three councillors, three representatives on this working group.
Councillor Orban.
Yes, just a little aside, it said, proposed working group meetings will be likely to be in the daytime. Well, apart from two councillors, I think, most people are retired, so I was a little bit confused about this.
That was my wording, Madam, I know, I realise that some councillors weren't readily available, there are a number of you that work. But you've probably, Madam, if you would, I mean, I'm not happy with number three, I just, I've actually just selected three councillors, I've identified three, two of whom were already on the sleep regeneration panel as part of our ex, representatives on external bodies. But please don't think I'm telling you who it is, I just suggested three names. And the lease of three councillors who've been involved concerning the market, including two of the three councillors that were involved in producing the draft business plan.
Councillor Allen.
To be honest with you, that's probably the best that we're likely to get, I think, out of all the work we'll be doing on the market in this sense of the moment, you know, extension, for us to continue to do what we're doing, whatever that is, and to allow perhaps a bigger view to be taken in relation to how the market could be improved with some of the things that we've talked about with NKDC, and be put into the pot to actually allow that to happen, including the garden parking. So I would resolve that we accept the class recommendations and we either accept the councillors that have been put forward because of their past history in terms of doing the business plan and putting forward the proposals to NKDC, or we go through a convoluted voting process and see if there's anything else that wants to do it. And I would suggest that we do accept the councillors that the class put forward because of their past history on the market working group and the market business plan development and go with them. That's my resolution.
Councillor Reeves. Seconded, Mr. Chair. If nobody speaks further on this, I'll do it. Let's see what is in favor.
One, two, three, four, you can't vote yourself, you know, there's no reason why you can't. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, all sixteen. Hands up, members. Thank you, councillors.
Thanks very much for your support. But I really, really like any council having your advice and support we can put to improve the market. I really appreciate your support and comments that sort of been pushed. So I want to see that we are, although we've been placed three, that the whole council are united and do the best for that sort of thing. And I really appreciate any advice, any support from anybody. But anyway, we should have a little segment, pass that, if there's an unated group and the council, we should support.
Thank you very much. Councillor Jackson.
Can I ask the bar presses?
I have that. I've asked for an early meeting, if that's okay, if that was, when I found, on Friday or I found any other meeting in places, I have to, and I will go back tomorrow morning and give those councillors' names to Andrew McDonald and get rid of course, an early meeting if I want.
Okay, I'll move on to item number nine, free, family, woman.
Yeah, another one, sorry to bring you like this, Chair, but I've been digging through and finding out things that we have or haven't done. Here's like the monument for this monument in 2010, according to what I can see on our records. Handi monument, this bit of our ownership, what I found, it's created this structure, it's got lightning conductor, which we haven't checked for a while, so, anyway, I'm aware that I went ahead myself with my supervisor, weeds grow, as you said, there's a number of things that need doing, the garb was knocked off, which I think I next to you recently as well. Then I had to try and find a specific specialist, and they are not the easiest people to find in relation to stonemasons that will look after this. So you will see there is a quote attached, which, as I'm suggesting there, is certainly close issues by the pound, quite a bit of water, but having looked back, we have to spend any of the last five years' budget anyway, so I'm bringing this to you, as you can see the things there. It will have to be done at a weekend, so we're paying a little bit of premium because of the impact on roads and such like, so I brought you the quote, I do believe as part we do need to get it checked out because it's looking slightly unsightly. And also I've got that garb all fitted back on, it is in six pieces at the minute. So that's the quote from Linnles, who I looked back through your records, was the people that lasted any work on the hand for you. Thank you.
Councillor Orban, followed by councillor Muffison, and councillor Charles.
I don't mind, obviously. Well, I had a side issue. This, obviously, we've got to pay and that is a very important, do we have any cameras that would identify who did the damage or anything like that? And is that a possibility to get?
It was word of mouth back to me that it was a car transporter that did it, but.
Would cameras be of help with that?
I did, I mean, this happened about three months ago, I'm famous. I couldn't follow it up because the garb was on the floor. Fortunately, it didn't matter, anybody was rescued and taken out to the depot.
Right, so I've got a series of councillors, councillor Orban.
Two questions. I appreciate the work you do, Kevin, I realise your work, though. Is there any, anybody else apart from Linnles?
Not in my local searches, I approach Bowmans of Stampa, they don't do what?
Co-op?
Bowmans of Stampa, they don't, they weren't interested in this kind of work.
And what?
Bowmans, they do.
Same, the co-op, they are stonemasons.
I think this is different.
Yeah, they do gravestones and inscriptions and such like, they wouldn't, I did, I didn't say, yes, reassured, I did make some inquiries, but I mean, this is quite specialist work, which is why I've only been able to get one.
And the second question is, it's come out the general reserves, which by the end of March will be ninety thousand pounds?
I'm hopeful about, just under a hundred, Madam, yes.
Yeah, I thought that brings out.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. I appreciate, I've got to find it from somewhere, it is a legacy of something regrettable, a council's not attempted to in past years, I'm bringing to taste value. We can rest assured our budget for this year, we will have a surplus. So, and I can probably do a varian within other budget heads of councillors, so desire, but I wasn't getting the work put in hand in the short term.
Thank you.
Councillor Muffison, we should speak, because it's obviously didn't say it already. Councillor Titmus.
Just a point of interest. First of all, I think that Linnles aren't the right people to do it because they don't work on both our rural walls, the one in the cemetery and a lot of the work in the cemetery, also the one in marketplace, so they probably aren't specialists. But then I think May or June nineteen forty-four, the US Army Air Force sixty-first troop carrying group asked permission of the local councillor who was in sleep at the time, if they could move any monument out of the way so that they could bring their Dakotas or Douglas Sky Train airplanes, I wish the captain said yes.
Councillor Mrs. Allen.
Thank you, Chairman. I noticed that we've got the quote for repairs to the, and to replace the stone work. Since we're spending that amount of money, is it, would it worth to have the stone work cleaned?
Within this, this quote, I mean, when it says clean out weeds and bushes, et cetera, if you want, we can go back and get a quote for pressurized, washed clean, I got a sense I would be into rather a lot more money and road closure.
And also, I would like to say that we are not allowing to put any plant in on the, on the Roman monument itself. Why are we allowing for the plant?
At the best.
To be put on the handi monuments? Because they are placed on the, they're not on the pavement, they're on the monument itself.
I need to have a word to say going to the blue because they were put on there in the past.
Thank you. Councillor, this might be my turn, so we did a long time ago, this is where, agent experience as a councillor comes into play, takes some advice, I think, about whether those sleeping in blue trays were causing problems. And I think the response that we got from whoever we asked was that they would not
was that they would not cause any particular damage to the stone work. In terms of cleaning it, I think we might have some issues because it is a listed monument. And you really do the minimum amount of work to listed monuments. And they aren't particularly keen. You do get what they made them look pristine and brand new because they aren't pristine and they aren't brand new either. And in terms of, in terms of using Linnles to do the work, I've got half some experience with some of the monuments down in London. And it is quite important, I think, to continue to use and build the relationship with firms because they gain experience, they know, they get to know the structure well and they know the issues to look for. And so I think it is quite important to actually, you know, build that relationship. And I don't think there's any problem as a result of that to actually continue to use them. But we just wanted to close, make sure they don't start getting silly. But I do take the order to try and if at all possible, you know, make sure that we do claim against people who, you know, did damage to the monuments, even if accidentally and it's unfortunate that the people asleep would have to pick up a thousand pounds for the Linnles. And because we can't work out who actually did do the damage in the first place.
Councillor Graves and Councillor Pror. I do accept the quote, Mr Chair. Councillor Brunt.
I didn't have my hand, but I'm officially looked at. Yes, one can realise that this is not a work. It's just a personal comment in the sense that when we, busy as a councillor, receive quotations, I just feel that I'd like people to get more detail, I have to say, to carry out health and safety checks, before we actually get in with our money. Long, I guess, personally, just have a bit more detail in terms of what's going to happen. And if we back to the reports, like we have need to spend forty thousand pounds, I don't know. The other is, is this a building? Do we have to get this building descent to do the work? As it's going to be built.
I'm not cleaning the rings.
No.
Sorry, councillor. I'm not cleaning out weeds.
I've got Councillor Titmus.
Can I just add to that? I think we need to liaise with the conservation also, which I did. I did that when we did Warlord in the past. It's a difficult problem. And Linnles can do part of that conservation part.
I've got Paul, followed by. Because I've got his bow at the minute, and Councillor Graves.
I was the man of second, Councillor Graves.
We were supposed to have a CCTV opposite our, what's it? I don't know, opposite our museum some time ago. I see that you have, still haven't got it.
There's a lot of things that should have happened in the past, Councillor. I feel at the moment, we've got some to propose in second. We haven't had any alternatives put forward and under the put it to a vote. Can see what is in favour?
Sixteen, madam. I do have a couple of points, Councillor Brunt, in terms of, we used that quote exhaust system, we don't remain on that. This is not a specification driven one. So I did walk around with my supervisor and the specialist and told him what I wanted to do. Okay, so I put four, I put four, Chair. Yeah, you probably aware I reported to you, right, I would be blocked, four new cameras at the ramp. The other two were meant to go on one of the floodlight, fighting floodlight lighting columns at the ramp. Regrettably, the two cameras are the way to the wifi transmitter. I mean, it's not really, it's too close to safety for the pole. So I'll come back to you, just to go to see the save. I think the fixed, we need the pole, basically. Of course, the floodlights are also on a time regime as well. They go off at nine, which would be a unfortunate CCTV cameras. So the quote is attached. I can find the money for this year. I was going to lie in. I mentioned there in that skate park, which is coming on future. So I'm basically asking councillors to accept the quote for supplying installation of a six foot, a six metre column. It's the plan, which told me today I need to apply planning application for it. So, but it's got the extra two cameras that we already approved on. So, sorry to come back, I've distracted you. Just a bit of a problem. I'll propose it. And it's been seconded by Councillor Muffison. There's no reaching to street, take a look on the number twenty-three, four, five, six, seven, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, seventeen. When it comes back to planning application, I hope you'll also say no. Okay, so, I don't have skateboarder, I need public permission. I think whilst my report is self-explanatory, whether any, anybody from the working group, I mean, the working group has supported, I'm grateful they're input. You will see on the walls the proposals and diagrams and there are. I did try to attach a small one, the working group brought back. And the proposal costing one, two, three, one hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred and ten pounds. It includes a second by, whatever the extension is, it's the, the larger one. I'm suggesting, so if there's any other consultation you may require, but it's the, or the same.
Councillor Allen. It's a very nice picture. He doesn't show the regular zino or whatever it is. But it's clear, the mini grams goes with it.
He does, and I'll drop that for you. Is it?
I mean, on the schematic, it is, so, Councillor, but I do take the point.
So we get even more than shown on the picture, that's all I'm saying. Councillor Titmus, you have your hand up. See, Chair.
I don't always see everybody's hand up, so thank you.
I'd like to sort of compliment one of our councillors on this matter. If it wasn't for Mark Graves, who about five years ago set up the open spaces plan, we wouldn't have a call for the skate park. He very sensibly put aside a certain amount of money each year because five or six years ago, we realised that we're going to have to refurbish or replace this skate park within a fairly short time still. Because the previous skate park and equipment we had in there, I think, was poorly procured. It's rusty away and it is frankly not fit for purpose. So I'd have to, to mark those who are doing this, and that's why we've got the money available to do this. Can I just point out a couple of features from the, on this current plan? And I hope it's the last plan. We've spent, we've gone through an awful lot of situations. And you know the sort of history behind this. But if you look at this skate park plan as it is, you're facing south. So Boston Road is behind you. And you can see what we managed to achieve now, I believe, or over ramps managed to achieve, a cross flow of activity. This is activity for all ages. And if you notice, the nearest set of ramps, well, the quarter pipes and the two of them, absolutely little, are for the youngsters, very, naught point nine metres high. And they increasingly get more difficult and more arduous for the older, more experienced people, the further you go away. The other thing about it, and it's something we've learned over the years, is that where we have what I would call a straight forward backwards and forwards movement of either skateboarders or BMX riders or mini scootlers, this provides a sort of cross flow. So if you start at the top left hand corner, you can come down, go over a ramp, go up to the double pipe, no, sorry, the half pipe on the top, top right there. You can come down another slope, come back, go up the second ramp, a different ramp from one you came down on. And you can sort of move away and throw a round at a skate park, which I think would be much better for the youngsters. The only other thing that the skate park working group has done, just like to draw attention, is there is the opportunity to have different coloured ramps now. That technology allows us, rather than have the sort of grey or dark grey, to have light coloured ramps. And apparently, they are all the vote in Los Angeles, because they reflect the heat because metal can get hot occasionally in the sun. However. I think that would look very shabby, frankly, to do it like that. And so our recommendations would be.
Councillor Fennell, this one by Councillor Allen.
May I find out this, Los Angeles one also is a sound dead now. Which will be acceptable to the people that are living in that area, especially if it went round and up and down. Thank you, that's it.
Councillor Allen.
I think the material is, you know, great in the can, you know, it's great or bright and gaudy, you know, and suitable for the American, you know, seesable to sleep them. Can I suppose that we accept the recommendation that someone, that someone's asked before?
Seconded. I like, is never watching to speak or go back and do.
So I'd just like to thank the clerk. Before he was a clerk, as a project lead, he was very patient. I've been a councillor for four years and a number of reports that he produced for us, and it didn't come to fruition. But finally now, hopefully, it is coming to fruition. And the kids and children are enjoying themselves.
Okay, I've got Councillor Muffison and Councillor Graves and some councillors on the other side.
I would also like to thank Councillor Titmus because he did a lot of work last year. And when he was Chair of the Services Committee, knowing a lot of work, sometimes didn't get anywhere, and that's even more frustrating, obviously. But thank you, Councillor Titmus.
Councillor Graves.
Just passing, Mr Chair, we've been doing ten branding, as we do with the logos down there. But it is not nearly vinyl applied to metal because that would, I can see the coins going against it now. But it is reverse applied to a scratch resistant clear vinyl and then applied to the skate park so that it can't be defaced or erased or scratched off. Because if you're spending that amount of money, I'm sure that the contractor can accommodate that within the house. That will suggest the effects, Councillor, but you're quite right, unconscious of the big two.
Councillor Willis. Councillor Graves gone before me, so totally agree. Councillor Mrs Allen.
Is any way to protect the skate park against graffiti or damage of this?
I mean, the materials itself do come with sort of suggestions about its robustness and the sense of corrosion and such like. I mean, I've not actually made any inquiries with the working group on it. Graffiti, I, you know, protection against graffiti. Cameras might help.
Can I just say on the point of graffiti, the usual thing with skateboard parks is to remove anything that's offensive and then routinely are made to deal with it anymore. I believe we did have a suggestion for one of our, from Mr Coyne. I'm told and supposed to refer to as Mr Coyne, the maintenance class, if you stand as a councillor.
Explain in a minute, Councillor.
And I believe you suggested that if we got a world head artist involved, it might, might work. Would you like to address that?
Dino came through, I can't remember which one of yours. And I was just suggesting that because I have a tenuous link through to the group, well-known graffiti artist, Banksy, that I would explore that if council felt that it was a worthwhile thing to try. Whether anything could come of it or not, I don't know. The person I know worked with him for a number of years did some substantial progress for him. Had a very, very good working relationship and rapport with him. And I would assume that there is still no problem for getting in touch with him to see whether he would be interested in it. And if we manage to get even a small Banksy on this, it might elevate the centres.
It's all, I guess. Councillor Allen, the question.
My hand, I don't know.
Whether we appreciate, whether we appreciate on the skate park and whether it might encourage other new Banksy artists, I don't know. But if there is somewhere in sleep for a Banksy, I'd like to donate my garage door. If we just go back to, to, to the comments that have been made about the long developments associated with the skate park, I think we can say there's an awful lot of work we've done over the years and it's probably necessary to do. But I think the councillors can accept this foundation on the basis that we know that they're getting value for money. And to a certain extent, I think you can see from the pictures that we are getting quite a lot for the money that we have intended to spend on becoming a skate park. And that is very good for the town council, it's very good for the respective users. And I look forward, Councillor Titmus has obviously learnt an awful lot about all these features and all these opportunities of new skate park and all the work. And I look forward to seeing him use the skate park on his first day. So the board with the skate park, to a level of the skate park, showing how to use.
This final vote, Councillor Titmus, you all have a vote.
It's been suggested, and following on from what Paul Coyne has said, from the lads themselves, that we pre-graffiti the park. Apparently, Metheringham Skate Park has had the same. The council involved local people to put the graffiti on. So you don't have the rude words and the odd sort of symbols and so on. And the suggestion was that if we did that, we would be with it and so on. And at the same time, prevent anything untoward coming in the future. I think it's a reasonable idea.
And that kind of would be a skating.
Yes.
That would be good news.
Exactly.
Okay, are we clear what the proposal is?
Yes.
Okay, what's done here? Okay, can I see all those in favour?
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. Hands up, thank you very much. Can I just check you? I'd just suggest you want any more consultation? Do you want me to arrange one more? No, just get on with it. If I can say, for all this, we've happened on social media this week, the usual people that view us as a soft target didn't pick up on this report and this decision, which for this ten councillors, one of the biggest ones I've made, other than buying the ten dollars, it's not been on social media anyway. I honestly thought I'd be batting back next programme.
Thank you. I will sort that contract off with some people. J sixteen, two thousand and sixteen, five hundred and twenty-one. Thank you, Chair. Thank you. Nine point six, you've had a sheet of paper sent around.
Councillor Brunt, you said, the paper there, sort of update on the various achieving areas which we're looking at, certainly prepared to respond. But briefly, in terms of the five areas which we reported there, we've moved on with regard to the issue of signage. And area in particular to produce a length of the pool portion. Hopefully, we'll bring a shorter version to a future council meeting. It's not, the thing about signing, it's not just simply about pointing people accurately into where they want to go. At the moment, of course, if you walk around and sleep, if you find, if you foolishly follow the signs, you might end up somewhere linked or elsewhere. But it's more about the issue of our status of sleepers and what we have to offer. In actual fact, ironically, tomorrow with the park, I meet some prominent, because they're also interested in the whole issue of our signage and sleepers. So we'll give you an updated report on that. But there is also, not wishing to add to Mark Graves's burdens, lead to the HR panel, but Gary reminds that there is, if we were so minded, there is the possibility of training of our staff so that they could actually look after dog fowls and the like. But I just push that into your arena. One running thing on the centre, we're not the position to offer some formal advice to the council. We have been looking at this in terms of the number of options. And like many things that we look at nowadays, as time has moved on, ten, twenty years on, technology changed tremendously and can provide some very interesting links in terms of modern techniques for underpinning. I mean, I seem to live in the dark ages, what it meant to underpin a building. And it's quite fascinating in terms of the technology is now available. Now, I'm not yet committed to say the simple solution is to underpin the current toilet block or whatever. I'm just showing you the range and scope that we're looking at. And the other thing is, times have moved on tremendously to move on to the kiosk in terms of what modern buildings cost. I have been told to have raised between a hundred thousand to a quarter of millions the costs of putting in the kiosk of the recreation now. Or we could do that substantially less nowadays with modern building techniques. So we're keeping our own separate toilet issue. With regard to the kiosk, we do have the issue associated with lease. And we've actually moved on that. And I'm sure the clerk would want to come in and update what Maggie's obtained. Some pro bono, mostly, advice from Chatsworth. When we read the lease to Ten, we obviously wanted to modify the terms within our existing lease. But he's also got, for our regards, quite sensible, what is quote from Chatsworth in terms of doing that, of course. Um, mine pointed out the, the kiosk, which has cost us a lot of money in the past. Ten years old, or thereabouts, it seems, in terms of its age. Um, I think we may have to come back to in terms of, if we're going to maintain that building. Um, you know, the, the fans, which are meant to create the ventilation in the toilet parts, must have gone beyond their expected age. And if we're going to do nothing else, I think we're going to have to invest money in, in upgrading the ventilation fans along the way, but we'll return to that. Street furniture is a very interesting thing, something that, that in particular drew our attention to, but I have to say that many of us are passionate about this. Um, I've spoken with a number of councillors, we just wander around the museum area and the benches there are decaying rapidly. Um, and this should be a positive asset for sleepers, uh, as people come in. But I gather as ever, there is history associated with this and I, I'm told that at some point in the past, we did offer to actually take them over as Sleeper Town Council. There was some other route of funding of how they were first put in place, but we were basically told we, we actually had to inherit a whole great deal of work associated with, was it the fencing, the various things along the way? Hopefully with the clerk, um, we would want to make another approach to N K D C to, to see if we can arrive at some sensible arrangement where we would appropriately take over, um, some of the important areas, for example around the museum area, and actually look after them ourselves, um, along the way. That would be, that would cost us money, but there now. Um, positive outcome, I personally think in regards to number five, which is, if we were required to do, she's going to N K D C to talk about the whole issue of monies associated with litter, litter picking and the life. Kevin and I had, I think, a very productive meeting with Nina Pan and Jenny Bailey, um, in, in terms of them appreciating the situation that we're in, um, and sensibly discussing how we move forward. And the way that we decided to move forward is that, um, Kevin at the moment, along with Gray, is actually working with Jenny Bailey to actually look at the whole process of what's actually involved in terms of staff time there for money. Um, we, it was a very sensible and productive discussion that we had at the start. We, we, we did have to play games, to be frank. They, they recognised that, that one outcome could be that we just say, well, we will not do this in the future, we will hand it back to you. But we hope that we're working productively with the representatives from the N K A and we can bring further reports. I think Kenny's going to probably update us in nineteen ten, but happy to respond to any questions that people wish to raise.
Thank you very much. If there's no questions, I'll move on. Yes, I managed to call one and I've started to say, you know, I've been having these, I've had with the N K D C leads. I had the N K D C manager along with my service team, we certainly did some, um, scoping and indeed some work, showed us some raw data. And David, I've got to report back to the S T panel next week, I intend to bring something to you on the thirtieth, but there's some, some, uh, very interesting findings about the things street bins, litter picking, and things, and things that I'm finding out. So suffice to say, I've instructed my, I'm already started on the motion study to look at sort of roof optimization and why we have too many, collecting dockings and things of that help, but it will come back to you in due course. But I'm very interested about how many bins we've got out there and how they've grown exponentially over the years, our own, uh, I don't know. I can say to you that, um, in fairness, N K D C were very honest with us and said that the growth of the bin provision and street sweeping provision in the town has come about because the town councillors possibly decided they wanted to provide them in answer. Uh, but if we did give it back to them, they would revert to something much, much easier.
Kevin, I could just make a point there, that I would point out that the town itself has grown exponentially.
Yeah, no, I wasn't.
And it's still the size it was, and with the art of this exercise off.
It is like quite great, we've got ninety litter bins in our own, seventy are in strip locations and twenty are on our own site. So it's quite interesting, that's, but I will do one matter, that's been something for the meeting on the thirtieth, Jim.
Thank you very much.
And to note, um, to, to, to whether any other councillors wish to assist in at the meeting, well, next one is next week, twenty-third, nine fifteen to ten fifteen, Jim.
Have we combined nine, six and ten more?
Yes, I believe so, you have to do what happened to them, both the lights have been, okay, we'll just put them to mode.
Okay, so if we can progress on to item number eleven.
Eleven, well, I've just put on really for information, I mean, I'm not really seeking councillor to instruct necessarily. It's about the boundary commission, which has wider implications, but I thought it wrong, not to put it on the general, I didn't put brief discussion and decision, if you're minded to make one, so I'm guided by councillors.
Uh, please, as you probably have noted, the Boston constituency starts in Kirkville East Hall, which includes Sleeper Police Station, et cetera. Uh, councillor Allen?
Well, I'm just going to make the same point that you made, Chair, on this. Uh, at some stage, we really do need to try and address the issue that substantial part of Sleeper Town is not Sleeper Town. Um, in Sleeper Town now, and, and very shortly, it's not even going to be in the, same, the parliamentary constituency area, which is nonsense, really. We can't have people in, in, you know, uh, part of your estate voting for an entirely different, you know, city from the rest of the Sleeper.
Uh, councillor Willis?
Uh, well, I was looking at the observations, Chair, that, that the opportunity to make any substantive comment, to make any real difference, any real difference is now really passed. Because the boundary commission have published their proposals and their revised proposals and they're now actually at final consultation. They're not very likely to make any substantive changes to any of the boundaries. So we, if we were minded to make any, uh, objection or substantive suggestion, we should have done this months ago.
We did just, councillor Willis, months ago.
We, we didn't make a, we didn't ignore it entirely then, which is why we're with the situation.
Fair enough then, but, but, you know, we can talk about it if we like, but I think they're making a good point.
It doesn't, it doesn't, it doesn't look the fact that I can say it's nonsensical.
No, we did make representations, but they were probably. Anyway, if you're wrong, I mean, not to let me know that we're in the final stages, Chair.
Okay, uh, councillor Allen?
Are the residents of Kirkville East Hall, South Prime Peak Rural, are they aware of the situation?
I assume their town councils or parish councils have made them aware of that. It's not like. But as councillor said, it's far too late to worry if they haven't made, they've made their points. Um, and they've lost their chance and if you did know of their points, but you'd ignore like, the point is that we made, that we did ignore.
Uh, councillor Fennell?
Is there any point of, uh, saying it again, sending it through?
Uh, no, if I can say, it's the consultation persecution, not the, or the history of access, so. We have taken all the other forms made of the provision, consultation.
Um.